We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Janet?
Yes.
Can you start off with roll call for us, please?
Commissioner Gupta?
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Here.
Chairman Hansen?
Here.
And staff members presented by Monowitz and Fox.
We have consideration for the minutes that have been distributed. And does anybody want to make any additions, updates, or corrections?
No.
If not, I would like to move that we approve the minutes.
I have Commissioner.
I second.
With a motion, and I heard a second from Kunku.
Yes.
Okay. I'm now calling for roll call. Janet, will you do the roll call for approval or nay?
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Yes.
Chairman Hansen?
Aye.
Consent approved.
Yes, passage unanimously, five zero. We have a different format today. Usually, we begin our sessions in a boardroom. Today, we're trying for the first time doing it using teleconferencing. Please forgive us as we learn, as we do this. Normally, what we have at this time is a ability for people to talk to the commission for items that are not on the agenda. We've asked things to be submitted by email for people to talk about things upon the agenda. Did we ever receive any requests?
We received one. No, we had an action for public comment, nothing that's on the agenda, no.
Okay. The audio was not very clear, but I think you said there is nobody for speaking at this point.
That's correct.
Thank you. The way the normal meetings go is that we have a presentation for staff, followed by the applicant who may or may not wish to take the opportunity to do a presentation. Then we open it up for public comments, and then it comes back for us for discussion. We're going to, again, try to follow our traditional format to the best of our ability to do that. We've asked, again, for people to do emails for the public comment portion. Up front of us, we have a consent item and a request. We have gotten to remove item one from the consent item. I'm going to accept that request and have this one item now on the consent item, which is the Peninsula Open Space Trust. Does anybody else wish to remove an item off the consent item?
No.
No.
Not hearing any. I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent item number two.
I will move that we approve the consent item number two.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in either place say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, it sounds unanimous as five zero.
Sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry, what would I have to do?
I would like to follow up. I would like to follow up with roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Yes.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Chairman Hansen?
Aye. We received a request today from an individual to have an open hearing on the Peninsula Open Trust for item number one. The concern was that it was, did not follow in his mind that we have done all the due process that we should have. So we will open it up for staff for presentation and then discuss the merits of the email.
Thank you, Chair. This is Steve Monowitz, Planning Director. Are you getting an echo from my?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Is that better?
Yes.
No, still getting an echo?
No.
Better.
Okay, I had unmuted my computer mic in hopes that my video would show up, but that obviously didn't work, so you'll just have to bear with my voice only.
Oh, we can see you.
Well, we see you nicely.
Yeah.
Oh.
I like the bow tie.
Oh, thank you, Mario. You also probably see a square that says anonymous, and that's my telephone.
No, it says Steve.
Now, I believe Katie is on the line and prepared to present the project. I will just address the comment that came in right off the bat. And so the comment was from one of the members of our Agricultural Advisory Committee. And his concern was that when the matter was referred to the Agricultural Advisory Committee, they were not asked to provide input specifically on the general plan conformity determination that's before you today. I reviewed the memo that was provided to the Agricultural Advisory Commission, and it does state that it was being presented to the ag commission as an informational item and that no action on the part of the ag advisory is required, which I think are accurate statements. I think the preference of the commissioner who sent in the correspondence, which I don't disagree with, would have been that the memo to the commissioners would have said that the ag commissioners have an opportunity to provide input to the planning commission on whether or not they believe the project is consistent with the general plan. And I believe the correspondence goes on to state why that particular individual thinks it is not consistent with the general plan. So I just wanted to address the concern about process right off the bat because I feel that staff has complied with the requirement to inform the ag advisory committee of this general plan conformity determination that's before the commission today. So with that, I'll turn it over to Katie and ask her to provide a brief overview of the project, unless there's specific questions you'd like me to answer now about process.
Not at this point.
Katie, are you set to go?
Hi, Steve, I am. So hold on a minute, and I will pull up that point. All right, can everyone see that all right?
Yes.
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 All right, great. I'll get started then. Good morning, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Katie Faulkner, and I am the project planner for this item. The issue before you now is a request from the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District to determine if their acquisition of the Gordon Ridge property in the unincorporated county conforms to the county general plan. The district proposes to acquire the subject parcels for incorporation into the adjacent Tunis Creek Open Space Preserve. This request for analysis of conformity with the general plan is required by California Government Code. The district intends to manage the property for open space, habitat preservation, conservation grazing, agriculture, watershed protection, and potentially low-intensity trails or recreation. A follow-up planning process will analyze any opportunities for natural resource management and compatible public trail uses. Any specific development proposed on the property would require appropriate permits and would be reviewed by the county at the time of application. So up on the screen now is a site map showing the three subject councils. These parcels are located in the San Gregorio area of unincorporated San Mateo. And up on the screen now is a map of current mid-pen preserves on which I have circled the Tunis Creek Open Space Preserve, which is adjacent to the subject parcels, just for reference. So the proposed acquisition potentially implicates several categories of the general plan. These categories include vegetative, water, fish, and wildlife resources, soil resources policies, visual quality policies, park and recreation resource policies, and rural land use policies. I can go into more detail on any of these if there are any questions, but for now, I'll leave it relatively short and just say the proposed acquisition does not conflict with any of the relevant policies as outlined in the staff report. The determination of general plan conformity is exempt from environmental review under the common sense exemption that the California Environmental Quality Act applies only to projects which have a potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. Right. And staff recommends that the planning commission find the proposed acquisition by the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District of three parcels for the purpose of expanding the Tunis Creek Open Space Preserve conforms with the county general plan. Thank you. I'm available for any questions or to go into more detail on any of the subject areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. I may supplement the staff report a little bit there just to address the issue that the person who submitted the comment seems to be most concerned about, and that is the impact that acquisitions by the Open Space District are having on agriculture on the coast side. And I think it's the commenter's concern that these acquisitions are occurring at the expense of agriculture, whereas my understanding is that the Open Space District, when it acquires properties on the coast side, is obligated, under their management plan, to thoroughly consider agricultural production activities and to pursue such agricultural activities where it's environmentally sustainable. So with permission from the Chair, I would suggest that if there's somebody from the Mid Peninsula Open Space District on the line, that we provide them with an opportunity to identify how they intend to incorporate agricultural uses into their future use of this land.
Yes, we'll get to the applicants if they're there, and hopefully they are. Have we, we've had many places where Mid Peninsula has acquired. Has agriculture ever occurred on any of those parcels in their district?
Yes, absolutely. They lease out many parcels in the coastal zone for grazing purposes and for, in some instances, for row crops, is my understanding.
Okay, thank you. I will open this up for the other commissioners if they wish to ask any questions. Lisa, do you have a question? Kunku, do you have a question?
Sorry, I was muted. No, I had, Lisa, I had no questions.
Okay. Kunku, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Manuel?
Just a general question. So are we saying then that the way it was presented to the agricultural commission, that's cover basically the requirement that is needed so that we can proceed with this?
Yes, I believe we have met all procedural requirements. I think the concern that staff presented this as an informational item as opposed to a request that the commission provide input on the upcoming general plan conformity determination is a valid criticism that isn't correct in the future, but not a reason why we should postpone action on this item.
Okay, so just a quick follow-up on that then. If it's decided that anything will be done with this particular parcels, will the agricultural commission have another chance to chime in, to have their input in a future project that may be developed in that area?
Can I interrupt real quick? If I can have Katie, please stop presenting so that we can see the commissioners on the screen.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Janet, thank you, Katie. So in response to Commissioner Ramirez's question, which I appreciate you bringing up because it's an important point, any future development of this site will require a permit, and that application will be referred to the Agricultural Advisory Commission for input. That being said, the use of the property for agricultural purposes, unless they're going to be building some structures, will not require a permit. So it will be up to the Mid Peninsula Open Space District to decide what, if any, agricultural activities they intend to undertake on the site. And that will not be a matter that will be discussed amongst the ag advisory committee members. But any future development absolutely would be presented to them.
Okay, all right. So they will have an opportunity at a later time to have their opinion regarding, I guess, agricultural activities.
Only to the degree that there is a development proposal on the table. Right now, there is no development proposal. In the event that the Open Space District proposes to, let's say, expand public recreational opportunities on the site, that will require a permit. That permit will be reviewed by the ag advisory committee, and the committee will have the opportunity at that time to address any concerns they may have about the impact of recreational opportunities on agriculture.
All right, all right, thank you for the answer.
Mario?
I have just, I just have a quick clarification maybe from Steve that says that this project does not conform to the general policy. The only one that does not conform is the common sense exception. Can you elaborate on that, Steve, please?
Okay, so there's two things that have to happen in conjunction with this action. Number one is the planning commission needs to determine that the project is consistent with the general plan policies. And then the second thing is that we need to address California Environmental Quality Act requirements regarding environmental review. So the, I didn't see the comment about this being the common sense. I didn't see anything in the comment letter criticizing staff's use as the common sense, of the common sense exemption for sequoia. I think the main concern from the commenter is about the consistency of the project with general plan policies that protect agricultural resources. So I don't think we have a problem with the common sense exemption. I think the issue really is whether or not this acquisition protects agricultural resources, which I would suggest is a question that we pose to the applicant to address.
Correct.
Okay, because I remember seeing in the report that there's something about the common sense clause is the only one that does not conflict or something like that. I'm trying to figure out where I saw that.
Oh, that is definitely in the report. The report identifies that as the basis why this decision by the commission is not subject to, let's say, an environmental impact report or negative declaration. So we don't need to go through an environmental review document, but we do need to find that the project is consistent with the general plan.
Okay, so basically, the project is exempt from environmental review under the Common Sense Exception Act of the California Sequoia.
That's right, that's right. But that's a separate determination from the determination that the project is consistent with the general plan, which is the question before you right now.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Okay. Does any other commissioner have a follow-up question? If not?
No.
Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
If anyone can hear me, this is Alan Ishibashi, Senior Rural Property Agent with Mid Peninsula Open Space. I lost part of the meeting there for a portion of the presentation, but from what I did here, I can explain a couple of things. I don't have a formal presentation.
That's fine.
But there is, 535 acres of the property are currently grazed by a local coastal grazing tenant. It is our intention to continue that grazing on the property for another five years with a five-year option for that tenant if they wish to extend their lease. In addition, there is a small portion, there's a small portion of property next to San Gregorio Creek that is in row crop agricultural production right now. And there is currently a five-year lease that entered into with that tenant, which we would, that lease would be assigned to us. So overall, agriculture on this property would be rather robust as almost the entire property would be either in grazing or in row crop production.
Does anybody, any commissioner have a question for the applicant?
Future.
Yeah, but just to reiterate on this then. So you don't see any way that in the future or in the somewhat near future, the agricultural activity would end or that it would not longer be allowed, I guess, based on the comment you say? But you mentioned about the, so this two properties under contract for the next five years. You did mention that you would offer the continuation for the grazing part of it. I didn't hear that you would actually offer the continuation for the crops part of that. Would that also be extended?
Yes, it could be extended. Right now, it's just a five-year lease term. There are no options in that lease. But the intention would be that, we have no use really for that area of the property and think it makes most sense for it to be in agricultural row crops. So that would be an option if they wish to extend. It would be, it could be extended.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
May I?
Yes, please do.
My question really kind of is along the same lines as Commissioner Ramirez. What was the initial intent of taking over this property?
I'm sorry, you broke up there for a second. Regarding the intent of us purchasing this property, is it's adjacent to our Toto Ranch property, which we did purchase from Post, I think, in 2012. So we're always looking for opportunities because we only purchase properties opportunity, when opportunities present themselves, to just expand our preserve. So this would be, you know, a 540-acre addition to the Tunis Creek Open Space Preserve. We don't have any current public recreational plans for this property. However, San Mateo County is working on the Alona-Aloney Portola Trail in this corridor. And this property, along with our Toto Ranch property, may be a viable place for that trail to go through at some future date.
And that would not impact agriculture?
No, no. So we've, you know, I guess we have somewhat differing opinions from some of the agricultural folks on the coast. But we think that the public use and the agricultural use is compatible on something like this. And we do have examples of that where we operate situations where we have cattle and people on the same property. And we would say that would be the same situation here.
Okay. And it's maintained by the council, by Mid Peninsula Council? Mid Peninsula?
Yeah, I mean, yes, I mean, the grazing tenant themselves is typically responsible for the grazing infrastructure on the property. But we would oversee it for larger capital-type expenses on this. And again, as Mr. Monowitz mentioned, we have no, the idea here is status quo. We have no current plans or really any near-future plans to do any type of significant work on this property. Just continue it and essentially land bank it for future public recreational opportunities.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll close this portion now. Janet, are you still online?
Yes.
Have we gotten any additional emails to be read into the record?
The only correspondence we received for item one is the email that Steve referred to in the beginning from Ron Sturgeon. Other than that, no.
Other than that, no. Okay, so we'll then close this portion of the public record unless, everybody has read the email. Let me ask that first before we go. I see one head, two heads not.
Yes.
I'm taking it that everybody has read the letters, so it doesn't need to be read. The red letter will be included in the finals recording. So I will receive directly to our discussions or ask any additional questions that you may. Is there any questions to follow up? I see heads going no.
No, I don't.
Any discussion?
Well, I have a question, and maybe I should have asked the previous person, but I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. If they wanted to lease this amount of acres right next to the property, in common sense is if you're planning to have something different, different use or building or creation or whatever in the future. I hear the person who spoke earlier that they just wanted to expand it for recreation or for the sake of having more land right next to their land. So technically speaking, an investor who's trying to lease something, it's not going to leave the property by itself just for the sake of acquiring a lease. They might have an idea or something that they were trying to do with a property. And then that from there, rest the concern of some people who have stated that that property may be doing a different purpose other than established by the general plan. That's something that I thought of, like sharing with all of you.
Can you follow up?
Yes. If I can follow up on something like that. I guess it was clearly stated that any, any other use would require a permit, which would have to go either through the planning commission or over to the agricultural commission, at which point the public and each of these entities would have a way of, you know, either a you know, either approving or disapproving whatever, you know, would be coming forward in the future. So I guess there is, there will be opportunities for those who are interested to, you know, to chime in and say, you know, if those are allowable things that could be done on the properties. So for that, at this point, I think I'm ready to support the acquiring of the land. So that's my opinion on this.
So should we make a motion?
Did I have a motion? It sounds like there's general agreement.
I think so.
Okay. Manuel, do you want to make the motion?
If you can bring it up, hold on. Is that something that can be brought up? Because I don't have my...
I can make a motion. I can make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. That the Planning Commission find that the proposed acquisition by the MROST of the Gordon Ridge property, APN 081-040-010, comma, 081-022-010, and 081-022-020, for the purpose of expanding the Tenidas Creek Open Space Preserve, conform to the county general plan.
Second.
So we have the motion by Mario, the second by Manuel.
Would I have to do a roll call?
Yes. Please have a roll call for yeas and nays.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Nay.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Chairman Hanson?
Aye. The motion passes for one. Thank you very much. We'll now go to item number three. Janet, can you read it in, please?
One moment. Item number three, owner, Lee Foley, applicant, David Ganging, file number PLN 201800458, location, Sunshine Valley Road in Moss Beach. And the project planner is Laura Richstone.
Hi, Laura here. Let me take a moment to share my screen. One moment. Does everyone see the slideshow?
Yes.
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 Excellent. Okay. Good morning. My name is Laura Richstone, and I will present upon the proposed coastal development permit and variance and mitigated night of declaration to construct a single-family residence with an internal second unit located on a 5,000-square-foot legal parcel. The proposal includes the construction of a 2,190-square-foot, three-story, single-family home to include a first-floor 730-square-foot second unit on a vacant parcel in the R1 S17 DRCD zoning district. At the bottom of the screen, you'll see a rendering, which was added last minute. And then to the right, you'll see a different type of rendering, or to the left. The parcel is located in the Moss Beach area on Sunshine Valley Road. The parcel is highlighted in yellow to the left or to the right of your screen, excuse me. It's, yeah. And then this is an aerial of the project parcel highlighted in blue. It's adjacent to an existing single-family residence and has historically been used as a background garden area for the neighboring parcel. And you'll see that on the following slides. So picture here is a site plan of the residence. Dean Creek is outlined in darker blue at the front. And due to the intermittent nature of Dean Creek, a 30-foot creek setback is required from the center line of the creek. The creek setback is outlined in the lighter blue color, and you can see it extends fairly far into the parcel. And then there's also, per the bio report, riparian vegetation located to the east of the parcel. And a 30-foot buffer zone is required from the edge of the riparian vegetation. And this buffer zone extends onto the parcel, onto the side of the parcel, and it's outlined in dark green. And then the proposed residence is orange. And the proposed bridge driveway is gray and it transverses over the creek. So as you can see, the proposed residence is located outside of both the creek buffer zone and the riparian buffer zone. So here are some pictures of the residence, really pictures of Dean Creek located in the front. So the creek bisects the front of the parcel, as you can see in the upper right or left, sorry. The creek sits between Sunshine Valley Road and in the fence. And it is culverted under the neighbor's driveway, as you can see in the picture to the left. Here are some more pictures. You can see how the parcel is kind of developed with grass and garden beds and really is used as a garden area for the house next door. Here, pictured here are pictures of the riparian vegetation to the east of the parcel identified by the project biologist. But this vegetation is located beyond the fence. Here are, so here are some floor plans. The applicant has proposed to construct a three-story residence. The first story is pictured to the left and consists of a ground floor second unit, while the main residence occupies the second and third stories. The second story of the residence follows the floor plan of the first story, includes a bedroom, bathroom, kitchen. And then the third floor of the main structure includes three more bedrooms and two bathrooms. Here are some elevations of the proposed residence as seen from the rear and the front and elevations of the right and left side of the residence. Here are some sections of the building to provide an idea of the scale as experienced from the adjacent residences in the rear and to the side. And it also shows the plate heights of the various floors. Here are some pictures of the story poles that were erected for the Design Review Committee review, which was reviewed by the Design Review Committee in July 2019 and was recommended for approval. Here's just a quick outline of the development criteria. The residence, the proposed residence has an FAR of 44%, where 53% is the maximum, a lot coverage of 16.5%, where 35% is the maximum, and a front setback of 37 feet or 20 feet is the minimum required, and a combined setback of 26 feet or 15 feet is the minimum. So those are the areas in which the development complies. So due to the creek setback and the riparian setback, the applicant is requesting a variance. They are requesting a variance from height restrictions, a variance from minimum rear setback, a variance from covered parking, and a variance from the daylight plane requirements. The applicant has proposed a height of 31 feet 4 inches, where 28 is the maximum, a rear setback of 18 feet, where 20 feet is required, no covered parking, where two covered parking spaces are required, and a rear yard and an encroachment into the rear yard daylight plane, where no encroachment is otherwise permitted. So in order, so the project meets the findings necessary to grant a variance listed here. The creek setback and riparian setback, in addition to the S17 development standards, significantly decreases the parcel's potential buildable area by about 44% when compared to the surrounding parcels. Without the variance, the applicant would not be able to provide a second unit or achieve a house of similar size to what is otherwise permitted for adjacent residences. Though the variance is being requested for several development standards, the applicant has taken steps to reduce the impact of the proposed project by reducing the height from an initial 33 feet to 31 feet 4 inches. They did that by reducing the plate heights of the floors and the roof pitch. They've provided uncovered tandem parking along the right property line, farther away from the riparian vegetation. They are proposing to replant riparian vegetation on the site. And they are reducing window placement on the third story to only what is required for emergency egress to avoid conflicts with the rear residence. The variance, a variance that allows the construction of a residence similar size to others in the same zoning district does not constitute a special privilege to the owner. So the project adheres to the general plan and LCP policies regarding fish, water, and wildlife resources, and includes mitigation measures relating to the timing of development outside of the rainy season and pre-construction surveys to reduce construction impacts to a less than significant level. As I stated before, the project was reviewed and recommended for approval by the CDRC in July of last year and adheres to the applicable zoning district regulations, various standards and findings, and the significant tree ordinance by replanting core trees on site. So this project required, in compliance with SEQA, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared and circulated for this project. The public comment period began on January 15, 2020 and ended on February 10. No comments were received during this period, and mitigation measures have been included as conditions of approval in the staff report. In addition, the NECDAC is an attachment to the staff report. In conclusion, planning recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration and approve the coast side designer view permit, coastal development permit and variance, county file number PLN 201800458, based on and subject to the required findings and conditions of approval listed in Attachment A of the staff report. And staff is here with me to answer any questions or provide any additional information the commissioners may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. If I could just add a few statements. You know, the granting of a variance is something that this commission and the staff looks at very carefully because granting exceptions to standards that apply to everyone else is something that we don't take lightly. In this particular instance, staff feels like the approval of a variance is an appropriate thing to do because the purpose of the variance is to enable the property owner to make reasonable use of their property in a manner that is most protective of the coastal resources that are on the site. So in order to protect the riparian values and the habitat values of Dean Creek, the requested variances will enable development to occur in a manner that's protective of those resources. So for that reason, staff is supporting the requested variance and we're happy to answer any questions the commission may have regarding that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Just for the records, as you come up as anonymous, that was Steve Monowitz. Does our, are there any questions? I'll start off first with Lisa. Do you have any questions for staff?
Yes, I do.
Please go.
It's really, the parcel is a beautiful parcel with so, such greenery and flowers. It looks beautiful. My question is that are the two parcels, the neighbor and this parcel, or the project under consideration, is it owned by the same owner?
Yeah, so they're owned by the same owner. The subject parcel went through a certificate of compliance type A for its own parcel legality, but they are owned by the same individual.
But they are owned by, right.
Correct.
From my understanding, they have to work very closely in order to have that bridge put in. Because there's, I understand in the staff report it says that there's going to be a bridge across the creek, and the creek is kind of running through underneath the other parcel as well.
Yes. Yes. So it would, so the parcel has a driveway structure that culverts the creek. And I imagine that the proposed project would copy something very similar to what they have done already.
Okay. So I'm trying to understand the layout or the plan, which is, I think, your slide nine.
Okay. Let me...
Is it possible for you to bring it up?
Yes.
We can just talk.
What slide? Tell me when I get there.
That's the one which shows the floor plan of the three floors.
Oh, okay. One moment. Do you see it?
I think it's the one before that.
The...
Further, go backwards, please.
This way? Well, the floor plans? I think there's a delay.
Yes, this one. Yes, right. So it says that the length of the house or the floor radius is 50 feet. So which part of it is 50 feet?
So you can see that one side of the house is longer than the other side. So I don't remember the exact numbers, but the long side is around 53, 50 feet, and then the short side is, I think, 37 or 40.
Okay. Okay. No, I think it's a very creative design. The view that we have on this slide looks kind of complex, but it looks pretty. So the first floor is a separate unit, basically?
Yes. So it's a second unit. There's a shared entry with the stairway up to the main unit, but the first floor is its own unit.
Okay. So this is the stairway you are talking about is the one on the right side?
Correct. Yes.
And that one is, I missed it. How big is that in square feet?
So the second unit is about 730 square feet, disregarding the stairway. With the stairway, it's about 830.
And the other two floors together?
Together, I, I think it's twenty-one hundred square feet about.
Okay, okay. Yes, I did see that. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so that clarifies that. And going forward to, three, three slides forward, please.
One, two, three. The sections?
Okay, okay. I'm not understanding this one.
So this is a visual of what it would look like if you took a slice in the middle of a house. This provides a perspective of how tall the house is in comparison to the house next door, which you see on the top, and the house in the rear, which you see on, on, on the, on the bottom. And it also shows you how tall each level is. So level, the first level is eight feet six inches. And this is an illustration to show you that the applicant had taken steps to reduce the height of, of the floors, to reduce the overall height of the building.
Okay. So if I understand correctly, the I'm trying to read that. There's so many other things that have popped up on my screen, seen from the front, the frontal view, the one on the top. You said the one on the right is the neighbor, neighboring house?
Yeah, so on the, on the top picture, imagine looking, standing on Sunshine Valley Road and looking straight. And you would see the proposed residence and the house next door.
Okay. So they can look into the yard, into the other house?
So yeah, so the house next door at eighteen fifty-five Sunshine, Sunshine Valley Road, which is owned by the same property owner. There, there are some windows on that side that look in, that, that are adjacent to the other side of the house, but they're offset. But yes, the structure will be taller than the structure next door. And then for the picture on the bottom, the, it shows kind of what it would look like if you were standing on the side of the residence, seeing a residence in the rear. And the residence in the rear is located on a hill, and it sits higher than, than the current property. So the subject's house wouldn't be overlooking or overshadowing that residence.
So the house next door, is that a single-story house?
Yes.
It's a single-story. Okay. Okay. Thank you, thank you for that. Just. Okay. Those are my only questions. I want to, Laura, I want to commend you on your report as well as the presentation. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lisa, do you have any questions?
No questions from me, thanks.
I have some questions, Commissioner Hansen.
Okay, Mario, you're up.
Okay, I, regarding this slide, Laura, that you have placed in comparison of the height of the two property. Actually, the two properties. I don't know. I recall there, there, we talked about last year about specific guidelines from measure of the height of the property that goes from the center for, for the land is all the way up to the top or something. So I think the comparison, when the topography of the land is completely different, it would make sense in this case because the house on the left has a topography that is higher than the one that we are talking about. And the one to the right, it's, it's almost at the same level. So it's more, more comparative, the one to the right than the one to the left because of the topography of the building. So I want to make sure that I understand correctly, if somebody can, or Steve or you can go back to the guidelines of the height measure of property that we talked about last, last, last year. And then another concern that I have, or question that I have is, let me see. Oh, you, you have, I don't know if you talk about eight out of the ten trees that are supposed to be removed are significant trees also. With the variance that this project is requesting, which are way too many variances, it gives the impressions, like we talked in the past, that when we present a project with many variants to the commission, it may give the implication of a special privilege. This property, as I read it, is not a single-family residence as described. It sounds more like a duplex or a triplex. And that's my heavy concern that I have in the presentation. Thank you, Commissioner Hansen.
Okay, to address your questions and tell me if I've missed anything. So the purpose of, of this slide currently on the screen is not to say that this residence is as tall as the residence behind it. It's just to show kind of how they relate to each other. You are correct that this residence is tall. And to address the other question that you had about how height is measured. In this district, we measure height from the existing grade to the topmost point immediately above. I don't know what the discussion was previously regarding height, as I was not there. Maybe Steve can chime in if he has anything else to say.
Hello? Hello? I lost you for about thirty seconds.
Oh, okay. So height in this district is measured from the existing grade to the top point immediately above. I don't know what the conversation the commission had previously regarding height measurement in this district. If, if the director would like to chime in and discuss that, I'm more than welcome. And then I was just saying that the purpose of the slide was not to, to say that this house is as tall as the house in the rear, but more to show how the sizes of the house relate to each other.
Laura, let me just clarify you right there. When you do comparison, and if you set the height, a specific height, it measure, how do you set the specific heights measure? Did you just set it?
Height is measured from existing grade to the point immediately above to the peak.
Okay. So when you do comparison, and as you stated, and maybe I misunderstood what you were saying, one house is taller than the other versus the one on the left is taller than the one on the right. So you're trying to, as I understood, you're trying to convince that the height of this property, even though it's a variance, is not, it's not such a big deal because there are properties from the bear, from the grade that are higher than that property. So if we do a comparison, we need to do a comparison from the same level of grade or the same topography so we can say that this house is taller or higher than the other properties. But when we compare this height with different topography or different grading, me, the comparison is null and void because doesn't really make us understand why is it that we need to approve this high variance?
So. Um, sorry. So this is, this is a slide that is county-produced. This is taken from the project plans. And I'll let the, the applicant talk more on it. Sorry, my dog's barking.
Laura, why don't you put yourself on mute? Let me try to answer the question.
Yeah, I'm gonna put my dog away. One second.
Okay. Thank you for your patience with that, commissioners. Commissioner Santa Cruz, your observations are absolutely correct. And I think Laura was trying to make the point that she wasn't intending to only compare this project to the uphill site. I, I think that the comparison to the house at the same level, you're right, that is something that needs to be taken into consideration. And in that regard, what I would say is that the existing home to the right in this figure is a one-story home that has the ability to, at some future date, be remodeled or added onto such that they are permitted to add a second story. And if they were to do that, then the difference would not be as substantial. So I think, you know, when we talk about comparing, comparing this project to other properties, we should not only think about, well, how do those properties exist now, but how might they be developed in the future? So that would be one point I'd make. The other thing with regard to your comment about this being a duplex, I, I think that's a correct observation as well. The only point I'd make in that regard is that under new state law that is encouraging second units, every single-family residence, residential parcel is entitled to a second unit, either internal or external. That is unless there's, you know, some limitation with public services. So the allowance of a second unit on this property is required by state law, but also is consistent with what would be allowed on adjacent properties. So I hope that answers your questions.
So Steve, let me, let me ask you a question. The moratorium or the amnesty of the special unit or additional ADU unit is because there are people who are illegally building second unit. Or, on the other hand, initially, what there were a single-family residence and they wanted to add another unit. But in this particular case, when somebody presents to me a project that is this residential, single-family residence or single-family unit, where they had the opportunity to build it as a second unit, that, that doesn't make sense the interpretation that the, the state allows a second unit. Because this is a fresh project. If they're intending to do a second unit, might as well say this is a duplex, not a single unit. Because this analysis is only for people who already have a single unit. They wanted to make it a second unit. So I don't quite agree on your statement that you said that, you know, the state required additional unit, and this is my own personal opinion. But, but truly, in this particular case, if it's a brand-new project, why don't you just call it a duplex?
I, I think we've called it what it is, which is a single-family residence with an accessory dwelling unit. And I, I believe that the state law applies to new projects as well as existing residences. And I'll let Tim jump in if he believes it's, if there's a different view.
Yeah, for, for purposes of zoning districts that are zoned for single-family residences, these types of ADUs are allowed as a matter of state law. Whether local jurisdictions agree or disagree with that policy, it's a function of state law.
Even if it's a new property that we wanted to present to the board or the commission saying, you know, I want me to, I want you to apply to have an additional unit, what's, what do you think compared with somebody who presented as a duplex?
It, it qualifies as an accessory dwelling unit because it meets all of the standards that define an accessory dwelling unit as distinct from a duplex. Different rules apply to accessory dwelling units than to duplexes. If this meets the definitions of an accessory dwelling unit, you can build it in a zone that's set aside for single-family residences.
Okay.
And that includes new construction.
Oh, okay. Okay, I think that's my observation. Oh, the last one is for Laura or Steve. Eight out of the ten trees to be removed are significant trees. Do we have a guideline how to replace those trees? Or how to go about to, to fix that?
So I'll, I'll take it from here. So it's usually a one-to-one replacement of trees to be removed, to be replanted. The applicant requested a decreased quantity of replanting, so.
I lost you.
Do you hear me now? Hi.
I lost you.
Do you hear me?
Sounds like we are having some connectivity problems. Mario, can you hear me? Mario?
I, I think I lost you. Hello?
Hi.
Hello?
I'm here, Laura's here. Laura, why don't you try?
Hello?
Hi.
I got you. I got you. I, I got, I got disconnected for a minute.
Okay. So as I was saying, it's a general one-to-one ratio of removal and replanting. The applicant has, has, had elected to request a decrease in planting and replant only four trees. And that was included in the, the landscape plan that was reviewed and approved by the designer view committee. But the applicant may be willing to replant more trees on site if, if asked.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Is that it for you, Mario?
Hello? Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the question that I have. Thank you very much.
Manuel, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I guess questions or comments on this. I, for, for me, I, I get a, I have a different interpretation, and I think Mr. Fox has already clarified on this. The, the new law as far as second units, I think is very clear that you can either, you, you can either bring to, the, the existing, whatever it was done illegally can be brought up so that is, what's it, what's the word I'm looking for?
Updated.
Say it again?
Updated.
Yeah, so, so, well, so that it can be updated and it can be brought into compliance is, is the, the word I was looking for, for whatever is existing. But for anybody that wants to add a second unit to either a whole new house or an addition separate from the, you know, from the existing dwelling unit, then i- if, if there's a space within the, within the lot, then it is allowed either as a whole new house with a unit or as a separate unit because there's enough land to, to incorporate that. Or actually to incorporate it on as a second story above the existing house. That's my, my interpretation. And I could be corrected on that, but I believe that's exactly what the law says. Being that I'm, I'm involved in construction and I've already done a couple of those things. My concern about this thing is a couple. It's actually the height. I think that it still is too, too high. And the, the mass of what they're presenting is just, it looks too massive to me. Especially if they're just going to run that, that vertical siding. It just makes it, you know, like a huge building right next to what is a single-story house. And I understand that, I guess, the, the concern is that they're, they're asking for a variance with regards to the daylight plane. Because the daylight plane goes into that, that house, the single-story house. And so it's understandable that the, the people on, or the people residing right now on that house are not, don't have a problem with, with losing the, the daylight plane because they're actually the owners of the both lots. But if they're going to sell that house at a later time, you know, that's going to create a problem for th- those people at a later time. So I do have a problem with the height of it and the massiveness of that, that building. And so the other one is also the, the tandem parking. Because this is going to be basically. Because this is going to be basically, technically, a duplex. All right? And so there'll be quite a few people living upstairs and then some people living down below, which I would say that it's going to create a problem for parking. Was there any consideration about finding a different way of structuring this thing so that there would be additional parking? Because we know that tandem parking doesn't really work other than for one car. That second car, you know, the thing about moving one car in and to allow the other one to go the farthest in, normally doesn't work. And there's only parking for one car and not two cars. So I have some problems with that. So those are my issues with that. So maybe someone can address some of that.
Yeah, so there are parking standards for second units. And I don't have it at hand, if you give me a second to pull it up. But I believe if the unit is included within the whole of the structure, it does not need additional parking. So you wouldn't need more than two parking spaces that you would need for a regular single-family residence. That is state law because the state wants to make building of these units as easy as possible. And parking is, makes it harder to fill these units. To provide, to speak to parking at the, for the main house, it was either provide a two-car garage at the, where the, as a first floor and then have a second and third floor as the main residence or provide the second unit. Staff took the position that it was better to provide housing since we are in a housing crisis than parking. And then, and there wasn't anywhere on the lot right now as the house is configured at this moment to provide covered parking. Because it, the side, so one side is of the house is riparian area and creek setback, and there is no development allowed in that area. And then the other side of the house, closer to the one-story house next door, you, there wouldn't be enough room for providing a setback, a structure, and then a five-feet buffer between a structure and the house. And so we couldn't fit it in the side yard next to the one-story residence. And then looking at fitting it in the backyard, that 18-foot rear side backyard, that backyard is not big enough to fit a compliant garage and provide an adequate turning radius to get into and out of the garage for two cars. So the site is really constrained because of the creek setback and the riparian setback of putting a detached or really eight-door and attached two-car garage with the second unit at the first floor.
Laura, this is Steve Monowitz. And I understood Commissioner Ramirez's question also to be, well, could we provide side-by-side parking as opposed to tandem? Is that a feasible option?
No, so the side yard, as I was saying, one side yard is in the riparian area and there's no development or parking of cars there. The other side yard is less than 18 feet wide. So that's not large enough to provide two parking spots. And then you can't do two parking spots in the front because that's where the creek setback is. You can't do two parking spots in the rear side-by-side because it's not, it's not big enough.
Well, thank you for your comment on that. And I don't know, can we address anything about the daylight plane? Because I think it would have actually been nice to see how much of that building encroaches into the daylight plane. We don't have that.
So daylight plane is, if I can share my screen, thinking about it. The daylight plane for this house is on the front and on the rear of the house. And it goes in. Sorry, wrong. So the front daylight plane, the house is compliant. The rear daylight plane, which is drawn from the rear yard setback up and then in, is non-compliant because the house was shifted two feet into the rear yard. So that means that setback goes through the building or that daylight plane goes through the building. So the whole rear side of the building encroaches into the daylight plane. If you look at the, one of the elevations, the rear and front elevation, at the front elevation, you can kind of see the daylight plane. And the left and right side, you can see the daylight planes and how the building encroaches into those daylight planes.
Okay, I didn't get to see it.
Do you see? Tell me if you can. Do you see the slides?
Yes, I do, yeah.
Okay, so these are the elevations for the residence, the right and the left side. So on one, on the darker side, on the right side elevation, the daylight plane goes through, through the rear and then kind of pops up. And then the daylight plane on the lighter side, the house does not approach into that.
So just a quick question on that. Then are you saying that the daylight, the daylight plane side does not interfere with the house on the right-hand side?
No, it's only from the front and the rear. It's only from two sides of the house.
Okay. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Just a procedural note for everyone. So I know the applicant's architect is on the line and he's been very patient, I think, in having an opportunity to present the project. So Chair Hanson, I know you were going through questions by commissioners. And maybe we can get through those questions and move on to the applicant's presentation.
There soon. Let's see, Lisa, did you have any question?
Well, I had similar concerns to what's been spoken of so far. But as long as the applicant's going to come on, I'll bring up something else which maybe he can clarify. The landscape plan and the tree planting plans, L1, 001, and L, whatever. Those plans include new plantings of invasive, non-native myoperum latem trees, which does not agree with condition of approval number five, which calls for replaced tree plantings of white alder and western sycamore. I assume this condition was added by CDRC last July, but the plan should be brought up to date. It's not clear whether the new redwood and cypress trees are still in the plan and where the alder and the sycamore are to go. And so ultimately, I think it's important to check with CBRC, landscape architect, to find out what was intended by the committee. But anyway, perhaps the applicant can elaborate.
Okay, do you have any other questions, staff?
Me? No.
No.
Okay, and I have one question. Can you go back to the floor plan?
Yeah, one moment, please. Thinking about it. It's not the right one. It's connected. Laura, are you online? Yes, can you hear and see me?
There you are.
Excellent. Sorry for that. Commissioner Hanson, you would like the floor plans?
Correct. Okay, thank you. So the first floor plan, in the upper left-hand corner, is a closet. Is that a legally functioning closet?
I don't know what the building code is for the size of a closet. That would have to be addressed during building review. But if it's not big enough, the building department would have that comment and they would just push the doors to the closet more into the room to make it larger. Closets don't necessarily have to be squares.
I appreciate that, but being able to be functional, I mean, you could not, I have yet to figure out how you would hang clothes in there. Because, you know, the hangers would hang out and, you know, you may have, you know, a foot to hang shirts and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Second question is, on the third floor, on the main bedroom, there is a huge triangle that is blank. And usually, you just don't give up space. What is that for?
I would leave that to the architect to discuss.
Well, we don't know what that is. We'll ask the architect.
Yes.
Okay. Not any more questions from commissioners. We'll now go to the applicant for questions and presentation, if any.
I will stop sharing my screen. One moment.
Hello, everyone. My name is David Janing. I am the applicant for the project and the architect representing the client. My practice is in San Francisco and I also teach at UC Berkeley, both design courses, the architecture department and construction courses as well. I'm going to try to show my, share the... Can everyone see the rendering?
Yes.
Okay, that's better looking than my face. So I would, I'm here to answer any questions on this. One thing I would like to bring up is the, this is a tight side, even though this is a legal 5,000-square-foot lot site. As Laura has pointed out, with the riparian setback and the creek setback, that left us with quite a small available footprint for any, anything allowed. Where we got to the third floor of the project, we worked to minimize the floor-to-floor height. That would, one, we reduced the pitch of the roof to minimize the peak, which encroaches on the setback. However, all the other corners, the four corners, sit at or below the minimum 28-foot back requirements. We reduced the floor-to-floor height. So we had an eight-and-a-half-foot ceiling by using a really quite robust structural floor system to minimize the floor depth itself. The house has a radiant flooring system and uses fresh air requirements by operable windows. If we had reduced the floor-to-floor height any greater, we have a concern about the volume of air into each of these rooms and then the trapped heat that would be at the ceiling level. So we went from nine-and-a-half-foot ceiling down to a six, eight-and-a-half-foot ceiling height here to mitigate any encroachment at the peak in the middle of the house. We did look at another solution, which was to lower the floor to by three, three-and-a-half feet, which would submerge the first floor partially and create a cutout in the rear of the yard for a sunken courtyard. This was not advised by a geotechnical engineer as this would require continuous stump pump system to be running for that lower level as well as a quite rigorous, robust, expensive waterproofing details to accommodate that. So we did our best here to mitigate any encroachment on that daylight plane in that north direction. We are asking for variances. There are, actually, the arborists, they actually had a second arborist look at this as well, too, where to get opinions on a couple of the trees, which have a low frage and a split in the frage, which apparently created concern for them about this tree eventually, this tree potentially falling down.
David?
David? Yes, I'm here.
Could you hold on for a minute? Janet, can I ask you to mute your microphone? It is cutting in and out on David.
Sure.
Thank you. Go ahead, David.
Yeah, thank you. A few of the other trees, again, the arborist was kind of shaking their head on this one where it's called the Nogio. He actually classified this himself as a shrub. So there's a little bit of semantics about whether this is a shrub or a tree. The shrub has grown so much over the years that it has a diameter, some of them have diameters of eight to 12 inches. So they kind of look tree-like. But I'm not here to argue the significance of those shrubs. The planting replacements, I just want to correct one thing. We have the planning commission, or sorry, the design review committee recommended replacement of six trees and corrected the six trees, or requested the six trees that we actually have replaced. So there was not a, there was not eight trees requested to be replaced with their own six. And the six that were requested had specific planting types that requested, and we accommodated those six. Now, if we need to add an additional two, I'm sure the owner would be more than obliged to accommodate that request. Further comments about the massing of the house. Yes, this is, this is a small footprint. This is 830 square feet, which is quite a modest footprint, which is, again, a result of the area allowed. This did push a proportion more vertical than we normally would see here. We worked that to try to minimize that by view here on approach coming west off of Sunshine Valley Road. You actually try to minimize the bulk and the mass by actually creating a slight fold in the plane on the long elevations, which, there actually are quite a few trees upon Sunshine Valley Road on approach where this house is really not even apparent to be in view until you get to the adjacent property there, 1855, which is a one-story house in the background here. Otherwise, we really worked hard to create simple roof slopes that would minimize the bulk of this house. Otherwise, we were not, we were not in this position to play a game of altering the floor or massing, since we just have a really tight footprint allowed on this site. The material itself, this is a, this is a seater. This is found typical on, most, I teach at school. May get a little winded here with my description as I get really passionate about this. So I'm going to give a short description of this. This follows a modernist tradition from the 50s and 60s. It began almost famously in the range. But also, this wood type and this wood types of these, non-projecting eaves, and the material used, this redwood, is a material that shows it's really a robust material that others recently here with the natural elements as well as works for wind protection and the minimum rain that gets hit in this part of the coast. So we kind of see ourselves sitting on the, sitting on the shoulders tradition that's kind of built upon since modern development time. The, I want to, our practice also, we deal with affordable housing projects as well. Do you want to restate the prices that we're in here in the state and in the region especially, over increasing the amount of housing? So I do appreciate the state.
Excuse me, sorry, David? Your mic was really kind of cutting off there. Were you doing something different?
I'm not, but I...
That's better.
Okay, all right. Sorry.
Yeah, maybe talk closer. That's fine. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We had looked earlier on of adding on a, either covered parking carport or parking into, into the house. But with the, again, with the small footprint allowed here, we took the position and we appreciate the planning department to agree with this position that we'd rather see more housing built here than covered parking So yes, this does allow room for two families to live, live within this house. And we are taking advantage of, we appreciate this safe ended here for the ADUs to be included in new construction. Um, I'm here for further, further, any other questions that come up? Happy to address, or if I haven't addressed any others, any of the commissioners, please feel free to questions my way.
Daniel, you have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, well, he was cutting out a lot. I mean, the, 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 the voice came through, uh, you know, sporadically. But I, I, I really didn't hear about, my, my question was about the massing, especially, you know, that, that, that feels to me like it's a, it's, it's just this huge chunk of, of building with no setbacks or, you know. And it's just to me, those, those vertical lines just makes it, that is a, makes it like a massive building to me. I wonder if it could be like, you know, a, a, a band or somewhere in the middle to break it up or anyway.
Should, you want me to address that? Okay. So we may, we may or may not, I may not convince you upon this. And that's fine if I, if I do not. The position we have here is if we ran any of these, these bands horizontal here, especially when we get to the roof line, we would be really torturing the wood panels themselves. It would be cut into such an acute angle. So we made the decision here to run these vertically. What may not show so clearly in this rendering, but it's showing the elevations, that that's the board width changes upon each of these planes. So what you're seeing in the front face is a wider nominal eight inch board width. It changes to a nominal four and a nominal two on other faces as well to give some variety and change in that. At the same time respecting the syntax of this material, this linear building material, so that we don't expose ourselves to end rain and potential rocks down the road. Trying to be careful about detailing this wood so it has a long lasting pressure.
Okay, uh, can, can you, can you address Fred's, Fred's question about that empty space in the third floor?
Yes, I can. There is, uh, that is an additional storage closet behind the main closet. So what's not shown in that plan cut is an additional, two additional doors that are sliding doors that allow, one, you have a standard closet, but then you can open up an access door for lower heights. So this is now in the front of the house here where we have some points really low, like four foot, three and a half foot clearances at the front corner where it gets pitched. That allows just, you know, the family just to store off-season items, just an additional storage. We're using every square inch of this project of the table, of the available house.
Okay. Thank you.
Did everybody hear him okay? Or I know, I know he was cutting in and out for a, a lot for me.
For me as well. I think it would be better if he called in. So we would have audio.
So if he calls in, if he could mute his mic and that, just like Steve did?
Yeah, but I, I would say that in, in general, I did understand, yeah, the, the, the voice is, the audio has been bad, but in general, I did understand what he was saying. And I don't know if Fred understood what the answer to his question, but I did, I did get it.
But let's give him a chance to, to call in. So this way, if there are any other questions, it would just be more clear.
Do we have any other questions?
Yeah, let's leave that to the chair.
I don't have any questions and I could understand him.
I, I don't have any questions. I already kind of make up my mind.
I have a question.
Okay.
So we'll wait David gets back on.
Okay, he's not on.
I did want to mention that Commissioner Santa Cruz needs to leave by 11 o'clock, so just wanted to make that note.
And Commissioner Hansen?
Yes?
While the, while David comes on the line, I don't know if that could be legally feasible, but by 11, we're not gonna, we're having figured out the voting on this. I already, I'm going to propose, I am against that, okay?
Uh, you, I understand your feelings and, but you can't cast an absent vote, just to be clear.
Okay, so if by, by 11 it's not done, then I'm, I'm not voting then. That's basically what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I've joined now via audio.
Okay.
So go ahead and mute your mic from, on your computer. And then,
Yeah, I've done that.
I'll show David's mic on the computer muted.
I apologize here for the loss of audio. If there's any clarification I need to make, please feel free to ask.
Okay, do we have any more questions with David?
Yes, I do.
Please tell.
So this triangular area behind the closet on the third floor, how do, where's the entrance to that area? Or is it not designed yet?
Uh, Commissioner, that, that is designed. That, there is a storage, this is a small storage closet that's behind the clothing closet, so not shown in this plan cuts at four feet. There are two lower doors that give access to storage for off-season items and boxes. So that is just an additional storage space. I apologize, the plan is not showing the door access into that.
Okay, thank you. The other question that I have is this rendering that we see, this is how it's going to look?
To the best of our abilities, yes, that's how it's going to look. So the, the idea is, um, as we sit on the edge of this riparian corridor to the east, so we're viewing this from the east. We wanted to, and that client is happy to do this because they love this, this edge of the, of the property, is to bring the riparian floor planting all the way up to the edge of the house, to bring the forest to the edge of the house. So I, we're trying to show that, best illustrate that here in this, in this rendered view.
And if I could jump in real quickly, I think that this rendering does the best to show the house as it looks unobstructed. But as I think was pointed out earlier, given the natural vegetation that surrounds the site, most of the general public will not get this view of the home. It will be obstructed by intervening vegetation. And David, perhaps you can describe a little bit more about how the structure will be shielded from public viewing areas.
Uh, yes, I'd be happy to. So particularly from this rendering, we're standing, um, we're standing just at the foot of the, of Dean Creek. And we have hid a few of the existing forested trees here. And we're standing in front of them so we can actually show a view of, uh, view of the house. Even from the west upon approach, there are a series of tall trees on Sunshine Valley Road that doesn't even allow a view of the house until you're at the adjacent property at 1855 Sunshine Valley Road, which is that one-story house in the back of the rendering to the, to the right. Otherwise, the other view would be from the adjacent property that sits on top of the hill, which is shown to the left, left side of the rendering. Otherwise, Dean Creek now wraps around a little more aggressively to the east. And this is now just a forested riparian corridor where Sunshine Valley continues more on an easterly trajectory. These are really quite limited views of this house.
Uh, could you quickly point, point out for my benefit, where is this Sun Valley Road? Sun, yeah, Sunshine Valley Road.
So Sunshine Valley Road is, it's shown, it's not actually shown, it's off-stream to the right.
To the right.
So you can see a little bit of depression of, of Dean Creek, which is normally a dry creek, and you can see a little bit of a depression of that of the natural planting there. So approximately, you know, 10 to 20 feet to the north of that or to the right on the rendering is where Sunshine Valley Road is.
Okay. And, and the front of the house is, if you could tell me, yeah, front of the house is where?
The front of the house is that, uh, is the main, above the elevation shown was the doorway on the lower left and a bedroom window on the upper right. Yep.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yeah. My next question is, is this, you had, in your architectural description, mentioned something about affordable housing? Is, is there a plan to use this as affordable housing?
No, I, I may have misspoke. We, our practice right now is focused on single-family housing and affordable housing. So I just wanted to make a, a point to that, that we are fully invested in this housing crisis here to the, the types of projects that we take on. So this is not an affordable housing project, but I just wanted to give the full support of the state mandates and counties and cities picking this up and local ordinances to include ADUs and to ease restrictions of ADUs and either renovations or new projects.
Okay. And this particular house has two, two units. So are they, I can understand probably the lower one maybe for rental, but are they both? Is that what the owner plans to do is to rent these out?
Um, it is not. The, the, the plan right now is for, um, so their family lives in the adjacent house there, 1855, that one story. So it is, the main applicant's husband and wife, they have one young child. And they also have their, their older parents living with them as well. So the idea now is that they live in the upper, they themselves, the three of them live in the upper two floors in the main residence. And they have an option either for their parents to live in the ADU and have some autonomy, or maybe can rent out to have lower ADU at future, future time. There's also the way that the stair, I should say, is organized in the house and the entry allows to take out that entry into the ADU. So you could actually incorporate in, in that house as one unit by just simply removing an entry door into the ADU.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll be it with two kitchens.
Okay. Thank you. I have no more questions, Chair.
So pending no more further questions, um, we'll go to the public comment. Not hearing any. Uh, Janet, are you back?
I'm back. Um, can I please have him stop presenting at this time, please? And I have no public comment for this item.
Okay, so we'll then proceed to discussion. We have parking, trees, height, daylight plane, variances and tandem parking. Whoops, I got that twice. Anybody want to lead the discussion?
I haven't said much, so let me just say my piece. Okay, this is Lisa. I, I too had concerns about the variance and understand the process of, what you're saying is that the, that a house with a total of six bedrooms and four bathrooms, that you're entitled to that kind of a structure no matter what. That's, that's what's proposed here, which seems, it seems awfully big. And, and also because it's next door to the one-story house, also the parking, the, the tandem spaces for, for that number of bedrooms. I mean, what are the odds that they're actually not going to be parking on the riparian setback on the property? Sunshine Valley Road is a narrow winding rural road with very little space on the side. I know there is a couple of spaces in front of this property, but that's unusual. So those are my thoughts on that, on variance. I do appreciate the driveway birch instead of a culvert. And then just to get back to the landscaping, uh, the tree planting plans, which don't match the condition of approval. Basically where I started with this was looking at the plans. I was going to make the comment to condition it to not plant any new myoperum latem. I know it's a shrub tree, doesn't matter what you call it, but it's very invasive. It's also, the foliage and berries are toxic. And, um, the, the landscape plan shows new plantings of that, of myoperum latem. And then when I looked in the conditions, I said, oh, there already is a condition providing for these native trees, the white alder and the west sycamore, but that's not reflected on the landscape plan. So my concern is for staff, you know, when, when this comes to the commission, to have the landscape plan match, to have this, what is actually proposed, if we're, if we're going to approve this landscape plan, I couldn't approve it. But apparently according to the conditions, perhaps it's, it's not actually that way. It just hasn't been updated since the CDRC saw this last July. And so basically my, my request is that, see, you check with CDRC and find out what was determined at that meeting that basically don't plant any more myoperum, please, it's too invasive. That's all I've got. Thanks.
So, uh, may I go ahead?
Please do.
I agree that there's need for housing. And, I have no problem. I, I can understand why this, there are, there's a request for variance for the rear yard setback. Height, I can understand the reasoning why it's exceeded. Parking is one of my issues. The way I'm looking at the street map and everything, there's no, no place to park other than these two. Tandem, yes, not, not a good idea, but there are two parkings. So parking is one of my concerns. And my other concern is the looks. It does not fit or blend into the neighborhood external look. So that, that is a big concern for me.
Mario, want to join the conversation and opinions?
Well, I kind of like already stressed my opinions about this project, Commissioner Hansen. Too many variants, uh, huge amount of building. Although legally or procedurally would be okay. I don't agree that if you present a single family and then you do an ADU and, and then, you know, don't call it duplex or something. That's my own personal opinion. And so, um, and then the trees, like Commissioner Ketchum was saying, it does not reflect it on the, on the map. and then the trees, like Commissioner Ketchum was saying, it does not reflect it on the, on the map, uh, the, of the description, how to go about it. So I, that's, that's my, my two cents of that. I'm not so much about, uh, and I have been very vocal about it, an approving project that has way too many variances on, on this kind of, um, environment. It will not fit with the, with the, with the scenery and with the building and with the area. And so therefore, I already explained my point of view. But thank you very much for giving me the chance to express it again.
Manuel.
Um, yeah, like everybody else, I, I have some, uh, concerns also. I wonder if, uh, if we can make some recommendations to, uh, make some changes and see if they want to, you know, make modifications to the, to the whole, um, uh, building. But I don't know. At this point, I'm not sure that I'm ready to support this.
Mm-hmm. You need it.
Okay, so I hear two, it's two no's, uh, and so maybe we'll get there if we do something. Do I, summing it up?
Yes.
Okay. My own personal opinion is I'm not ever been in favor of a shoebox with holes in it. That's just not what I like. I think he went through all the proper procedures and got approval within the neighborhood who said it was agreeable with them. And I don't want to be a particular burden on that. I do understand in the horizontal lines, making it look more massive. So I understood his arguments very well. Well, it's, it's not a design I would pick, but since it's already gone through an extensive review period, um, I don't feel like burdening him with that.
Correct.
Uh, the trees, I think we could, we could get mitigated, um, with a clarification that the, uh, conditions of approval trump any, um, landscape plan currently submitted. The question on, as a whole, you know, do we move forward or not? You know? I'm not hearing a yes or a no out of this.
I, I, I think, I think as a whole, I think we have, uh, too many, um, too many concerns that I don't think, uh, as stands, um, we can be satisfied that, you know, it's a good project for us at this point.
So your suggestion, um, could, that we should continue this or deny it?
I, I would say that we, that, that we probably deny it and then just, uh, they can always come back, uh, with a new, uh, project, you know, um, with a modified, uh, project, but maybe some, uh, Steve or someone can shine on that.
I, I could add something.
I'm here.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I'll back off. Steve.
No, you go ahead, Lisa.
Oh, um, I just wanted to say I was surprised at the, the image in the rendering. I actually found it attractive and, and I, I can't say why, but it, uh, I went by the site and I mean, Sunshine Valley Road is very rural and everything, and this really is just a thick, lush riparian area. And, uh, this building just sat right down in it. What a choice place to live. I, I guess, I also appreciate the fact that they did tweak it to, to bring, it was thirty-three feet and I think we got down to thirty-one and some inches, so that's nice. I, I guess I'm on the fence. I, I didn't, I didn't anticipate that there would be much agreement against the project. And so I was willing to, uh, I'd be willing to, uh, vote for it, but, um, if, if there is other significance, I could go, I could, I could support that as well. Kind of on the fence.
Okay, should we move with a motion to, to, to move forward with this or, or to have it in continuance, Commissioner Hanson?
Well, Lisa, it sounds like you said you could support it. Would you be willing to offer a motion to support it and see if we get a second?
I'm not that willing.
Okay.
I don't want to make the motion, no.
Do we have anybody who wants to do a motion to either continue or deny?
I will do a motion.
Really on the fence about it. Like generally, the design, I, I like it, but my two issues, main one is the boxy looks of the building. Parking is two, but yes, I can live with that. So.
Hi, somebody's mic giving some feedback, and I don't know who.
If you're not, if you're not speaking, it's me.
I think it may be Steve.
I think it's Steve.
It could be Steve.
I'm on mute.
No, I can hear you.
Okay, maybe it was. Okay, maybe it was, maybe it was me.
Still hear it.
No. Big echo. Big echo.
I think, I think Steve is because your video is kind of grainy. I think it was better when I could just see, hear you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Hanson. Is that okay to talk right now? Is that, do you have anybody stand by? Okay, well, we need to move forward with this, either continuance or denying it. And, uh, do you mind, uh, making a motion or you want anyone of us to make a motion? I need to move on though, with my personal thing.
How about you make a motion and see if we get anybody to support it?
Okay. We recommend that the planning commission do not certify the initial study and mitigate a negative declaration and approval of the coastal development permit, design review permit, and variance by making the required finding and adopting the recommended condition of approval as shown on attachment A.
Your motion is for denial?
Do not certify. Do not certify.
Okay, if I may, Commissioner Hanson? Commissioner Hanson, may I offer input? Uh, the first is that if you're not approving the project, you take no action whatsoever on the SEQA document. So it, you don't certify the, you don't not certify the environmental document, you simply take no action. You can deny the application for permits, but you need to make a proposal. Whoever's proposing the motion should make a proposal about what findings to make. Because, um, the applicant has a right to appeal and has a right to say that the findings are not supported by the evidence in the record. So you have to say why you're denying it.
Okay, let's do. The recommendation is the planning commission denied the initial study and mitigated negative declaration of approval of coastal permit, design review, permit, and variance due to a significant number of variance on the project. That, would that be okay, Steve? I mean, Tim?
Well, first off, uh, don't make any reference to certifying because that's an environmental document issue.
No, I didn't say, I didn't say certify. I said do not, I, do not approve.
Okay, so to deny the application for a designer view permit and for variances.
For wait, for the number of variance presented in the report. Unless you want to add something else, any of the commissioner, and then, you know, we can move from there. Does any other commissioner have an additional recommendation or any second?
Uh, I, I would say, uh, due to, uh, lack of, uh, parking, um.
That's part of the way too many variances, uh, Manuel.
I don't know if parking is a lot.
I don't like the exterior looks. How do we add that?
I, I don't think we can, I don't, I don't think we can deny it based on, on looks. We have to deny it based on, you know, things that, uh, are not met. And I would say parking is one of those that is not met.
Can I, can I jump in here? Uh, it would seem to me if you want to deny, you, the finding would be, uh, that without the variance, well, there's, the finding is trys for without the variance, the landowner would be denied the rights and privileges and joy by other landowners in the same district. And I would, and you would say, no, it does not deny them that. And the other finding would be that the, the, uh, two tandem uncovered parking spaces are inadequate for these, for this number of bedrooms. That would be the only thing I, that's the only thing I see that would, uh, support the findings for denial.
Correct. Uh, Mr. Fox, does that meet, uh, your standard for what we need to do?
Well, y- yes, it, it constitutes a finding for denial. Um, but right now Commissioner Santa Cruz's motion is on the table, awaiting a second. Um, he can either withdraw the motion and you can instead substitute, uh, Ms. Ketchum's motion, or if she's not making it, um, someone can adopt it as their own. In other words, Commissioner Santa Cruz has to either adopt what Ms. Ketchum has said as his motion and then the motion has to be seconded, or he withdraws his motion and someone else makes a motion. Because right now there's a motion on the table and.
Yeah, Mr., Mr., Mr. Santa Cruz, can you, uh, uh, withdraw your motion? So perhaps we can go with the motion of, of Ms. Ketchum.
What's the motion for Ms. Ketchum?
What I, what I have proposed, what I had proposed for the findings that could not be made, what, sorry for the wording, was that the variance, uh, would deny the, the landowner's special privileges at this, and also that the parking is inadequate for the, this number of units, bedrooms.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah. It's more specific that notion that I initially proposed. Yeah, okay.
So you, I think you have to, uh, I, I think you have to, uh, properly withdraw your motion.
I did. I said, I said I withdrawing my motion because Mrs. Ketchum is more specific that the motion that I initially presented.
Okay.
Can I hear the motion one more time by Ms. Ketchum?
What was that?
Have someone to propose a motion now?
No, it's already done.
I think we, we will go with the motion that Mrs. Ketchum, uh, has proposed.
Exactly.
I need to hear the motion. I'm sorry, I need to hear the motion being said one more time, though.
Okay, let me jump in here, folks, if that's okay. So what I understand is that, um, Mr. Santa Cruz started with a motion to deny based on the number of variances. Um, the, you know, the adequacy of that from a legal perspective was, uh, brought into question. Ms. Ketchum provided some suggestions about how the motion could be structured to address that concern. And, uh, Commissioner Santa Cruz withdrew his initial motion and instead proposed to deny the project based on the reasons articulated by Commissioner Ketchum, which I understand to be, um, so the new motion that Commissioner Santa Cruz has put forth is to deny the project, um, based on the fact that, um, denial of the variance would not, eliminate the reasonable use of the property in comparison to other properties. And Lisa, you said that better, but we can go back in the notes to dig that up. Um, and then secondly, that there, the number of parking spaces are inadequate to serve the number of bedrooms proposed by the project. So those would be the two reasons for denial contained within Commissioner Santa Cruz's motion. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, do you have a second?
I second.
I second that.
Then you can. Mario, you're making the.
Okay.
So who's the second?
So basically, Lisa and I seconded.
Yeah, Mario, Mario seconded the, the motion.
Mario seconded.
Okay, no, no.
It was Mario's motion. You can't second. It was Mario's motion to deny.
Oh, oh, that's right, that's right. I'm sorry. So in that case.
I believe, uh, Commissioner Gupta seconded. Am I right, Commissioner Gupta?
Uh, I did second it, yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Can I do a roll call at this time?
Do a roll call.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chairman Hanson?
I want to say nay, but I'll go aye with the group.
Thank you.
All in favor.
It's unanimous.
Unanimous.
This is available to the board supervisors within ten working days, I presume, if the conditions still apply in this time of pandemic.
That's correct. Um, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, I want to make sure that the applicant is aware that, uh, this decision to deny is appealable to the board by submitting, uh, appeal form, completed appeal form and appeal application fee.
Okay, thank you. And we'll now have Janet reading the item number four.
Item number four, we have owner, KN Properties, applicant Greg Ward, file number PLN two zero one seven zero zero one nine nine, location nine four zero zero Cabrillo Highway in Moss Beach, and the project planner is Olivia Boo.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great.
Okay, Olivia, um, this is Steve, and before you jump into your presentation, I just want to, um, make sure that the commissioners all receive the email correspondence that was sent in so far. And, um, I wanted to just summarize some of the concerns that have been expressed about the project, um, which involves the replacement of a landscape planter that was removed without permits. Um, and the concerns being about, um, the, in some folks' view, inadequate size of the planter, and then some other measures that, uh, folks believe should be taken to address safety issues. Um, I, since those emails have come in, I've asked Olivia to touch base with the applicant regarding those concerns and confirm that he will be available to participate in today's hearing online. So, um, Olivia, can you please update us? Have you been able to speak with the applicant on these issues? And is the applicant available to participate in today's hearing?
Unfortunately, I was not able to get in touch with him. I've tried a few times. Hello, who are you? Hi, Greg.
Yeah, I'm online. I've been listening all along. I'm here. Good morning.
Awesome.
Oh, that's great. Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure because if you weren't on the line, I, I didn't want, uh, to spend the commissioner's time getting into these issues if you were not going to be, uh, available to respond to the questions and concerns. But since you're here, I suggest we go ahead and proceed with the presentation. So, um, Olivia, why don't you take it away?
Great, thank you. Sorry, Janice, do I need to launch the presentation? It was on my screen yesterday.
That is correct. Um, go ahead and, and launch the presentation and, uh, project your screen.
Is, do I find it on the screen?
It'll be right next to your mute button. You will see a share button.
Share, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, we can see it.
Good morning, commissioners and county staff. Olivia Boo, planner for this project. I'd like to walk you through the project scope, policy compliance, concerns, and recommendation. The project site is an existing Chevron gas station located in Moss Beach along Highway One between Vermont Avenue and Lancaster Avenue. This is an existing site plan. The. The project is to restore a previous existing landscape planter that was removed without permits. This proposed landscape planter will be 136 square feet, 10 cubic yards of grading is proposed, and no tree removal. For, in referencing the site plan, the green shaded area is the approximate location of the planter. The blue area is the existing canopy for the gas station, and the yellow is the existing food mart. These are site photos from site inspections, views from the edge of the gas station property and close to Highway One. The green area shows the approximate.
I lost Olivia.
I just lost the presentation.
Can we try one more time?
Okay. Can you see it now?
No.
It was there for a moment and then it cut back.
Yeah, I was never able to see it, but I'm on my computer following the presentation with, with, what you sent.
Okay. Let's have her try one more time, okay. Can everyone see that?
No.
No.
I can, I can see it, but I can also see it on my computer separately.
I could see it on my end. Olivia, could you go to the next slide and see?
Yeah, I just, it just, it just stopped again. I'm not sure what's happening.
Let me try, hold on just one second.
This one?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, Olivia, tell me when to click next, okay?
Got it, thank you. So go ahead and click, go next, please. Oh, it's not changing on my screen.
One moment. Hmm. Let's try this one more time.
I see it now.
Okay.
I can't see that. Okay, now?
Oh, yeah.
There you go, okay, it's on slide two now. Can you go next? And go next, please.
Is that good?
Yeah, that's working well, so thank you. So to continue with the presentation, these photos and the next photo will show, it shows a good view of the open area of where the planter previously existed and the safety concerns of vehicles leaving and entering and leaving the gas station to Highway One. Next, please. Is it frozen, Janice?
No. Did we lose Janet?
Thanks. This is a view, I'm standing on the south side of the gas station, Highway One is to the left. Next, please. To discuss policy conformance for the project, it complies with general plan soil resources, visual quality, urban land use and transportation. For the local coastal program, general regulations, special design guidelines for coastal communities, regulation of scenic corridors in urban areas, and shoreline access. For zoning regulations, complies with standards for design in other areas. Next, please. Can you try and go back one? There you go, thank you. So the project requires review by Caltrans as it is proposed patient in the, in high, in the right-of-way of Highway One. The planter needs to be, it can be allowed upon application for an approval by Caltrans encouchment permit. It must meet per Caltrans the following items, the, follow the Caltrans standard plans and highway design manual guidelines for purposes of safety and setbacks. Also that plans that are included to not, to be located to not obscure pedestrian and bicyclist conflict points. And lastly, to re, they will need to review the vehicle turnaround within the gas station site so that it does not cause operational conflicts with Highway One. Next, please. For review by the Midcoast Community Council, their ultimate concern is traffic management and the unsafe entering and exiting again of vehicles from the gas station directly to Highway One. They did submit letters to the board of supervisors and Caltrans and have requested that asphalt curbs be installed along this property, two block stretch along Highway One, to help with the vehicle safety factor. Next slide, please. So the council also referenced in their review, specific documents, the San Mateo County Highway One Safety and Mobility Improvement Study, the Local Coastal Program Policy 2.51A, and lastly, the Caltrans Project Development Procedures Manual. And these are all, were all attached as, in the staff report. The, for the county's Highway One Safety and Mobility Improvement Study, this one is in progress and addressing ultimately improvements for the midcoast. One of the, one of the issues that will be, that is on the table for this project is that is good, is needs to be kept in mind, is also adequate access for the fuel trucks that need to come to the Chevron station for refueling purposes. And the, especially for the LCP policy, it does reference regulating for new driveway connections, which is not, the property and development already exists, so there's not necessarily a new driveway connection that's proposed for the project. Next slide, please. So staff is in agreement. I was going to go ahead and discuss while this slide is coming through. Staff is in agreement with the council's desire to restrict direct vehicle access to and from the gas station to Highway One. The goal of this specific project is to resolve the violation of the prior planter that was removed without permits. And ultimately, it does not reflect the full scope of the improvements that are in process and being recommended for this portion of Highway One. The, a larger scale of improving adequate access is, is under review and part of the scope, project scope for the San Mateo County Highway One Safety and Mobility Improvement Study, as well as connect the coastside plans. I did want to note with the project that there is no building permit required for this project, as Caltrans does has ultimate permit issuance. Next slide, please. For the environmental review, the project is exempt and considered a minor alteration of existing public or private structures involving negligible or no expansion of use beyond what is existing. And next slide, please. Just another view. And next slide, please. Staff is requesting approval of this design and project with the understanding that this, again, is a, with a goal that this is, the purpose to resolve the violation, and hoping and knowing that the, ultimately, there are development plans for the area to improve egress, ingress, and the safety issues for the project. That's the end of my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Lisa, do you have any questions?
I actually have a short slide presentation that I would like to speak to that could elaborate on, further on, on the presentation, whenever that's convenient for me to.
Are you speaking as a commissioner, or are you speaking as a concerned individual at this point?
As a commissioner.
Okay.
So Janice has that presentation?
Yes, I'm going to put it up, just one second.
Thank you. Let me just say while she's doing that, that I live in Moss Beach, and I served on the Midcoast Community Council from 2012 and to, through 2018. And this landscape removal at the gas station was first brought to our attention in my first year on the council, but as we were reviewing the wrap-up of the safety mobility studies, and community members said, well, what about, you know, this, this removal of this landscape is the exact opposite of what the safety mobility study is trying to do. And I didn't know how to approach it at that time, but the MCC finally did write a letter and started out with this in 2014, wrote to code compliance, and we worked with code compliance over various changes of staff at the county over the years, and then finally to the CDP. And so that's the background here. And just to say that the, to clarify the, from the presentation prior to this, that the MCC wrote letters to, wrote a letter to the board of supervisors, it was the supervisor Horsley who wrote to Caltrans in support of that. But that letter was a broader scope and included the three-block area west of the highway. The Chevron station was included in there, but already those comments were consistent with what we had said about it before, did not.
I apologize, we're helping try to figure this out for you.
Oh, the presentation's not coming up?
Yeah.
Well, you, the commissioners have it, basically, this was forwarded to you a week or two ago, the, it was a, basically, well, it's not complete, the slides I have are somewhat different, but it was the MCC presentation from 2018 that, that showed better pictures. What a shame you don't have that. Here I am looking at it now, this is to completely clarify everything for you. Can you turn that into a PDF? Is there anything, can I try to share it on my screen?
That's what I was going to say, Lisa, can you actually share your screen? If you see that screen shares button in the middle of the control bar?
Well, so if I share my screen, am I going to get everything else I got open, or just the PowerPoint? Or should I save?
You'll show everything on your screen, so what you should do is maximize your PowerPoint before you share.
Right. Let's see what we got. So I quit share.
Sometimes it takes a little bit to upload, so that might be occurring. Because I received it too, and I could try and open it and share it as well if this doesn't work.
Oh, okay. How long do we need to wait? Well, let me just talk about the first slide, even though you can't see it. It's a shot of the, from Google Street View, and it shows the previous planter that was there. So you can see how big it was. And it, of course, is significantly bigger than the one that's proposed. And so this is 2011, and it, that was when it was removed. The access openings, there are two on Highway One and two on Vermont, and the proposed replacement is only one-sixth in area of what was there before. The staff report analysis compares the proposed planter to no planter, but the comparison should be to the original planter to consider traffic circulation and safety, area of permeable surface, and aesthetics. And the CDP is, is intended to fully resolve the violation. It's not starting out from, no, no planter, it's starting out from the previous planter. You're still not seeing it yet, right? So the proposed project.
Lisa, you want me to try and share my screen?
Should I unshare it then? I mean, even though it did share, it says, okay, the arrow's going the other way, so you can go ahead and try, so I'll just keep talking. So the proposed project results in 680 square feet of net increase in impermeable surface, which is not addressed in the staff report. And I want to compare this to a construction project at Pillar Ridge, where I live, the clubhouse ADA ramp for which the county required removal of an equal amount of existing paved surface elsewhere on our property here, which resulted in reduced clubhouse patio and pool deck area. We had to do that because we put it, had to put in the ramp. And so that's, doesn't seem fair, that the gas station doesn't have to restore what impermeable ser, what permeable surface was there before. This is, this. Oh, you've got it. No, you're showing, you're showing the.
Oh, let me try again.
The one I sent in is, is called 20200425 MB Chevron Slides, Ketchum. That's the name of the file. So.
I had it for a second. I don't know. I lost it. Suki tried.
Well, this one will be better than nothing, but, because it has some of the same pictures. Are you going to try the other one again or should I?
Let's see.
And I apologize. Suki and I have been trying to get it to work on our end and have not been successful, so bear with us.
You had it at the beginning of the meeting and we, I mean, before we started. Remember you tested it and you had it up? So I don't know what.
We could try it one more time.
All right. I've got it. I don't know if you guys are seeing it.
No.
Oh, no. Give it a second.
Well, give it a second. Yeah.
Yeah, the first slide of what I'm trying to show you has, has two pictures of the old landscape.
I don't think that's it, Steve. I think, I don't think you have that, maybe. Let, let us try. If you could, if you could stop projecting, Suki and I are going to try one more time.
So while we're waiting, let me just read the list of, the consistent list of requests from the Midcoast Community Council, which I also support, is to reduce the highway access opening from the existing 144 feet or something like that to a maximum of 60 feet wide. Oh, she's got it.
Can you see it?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so I was talking about this. This is the slide I was talking about. So I've already said everything I have to say about this, but there it is. One thing I could point out here in the top picture, the former two openings that were there, the, and, and as MCC has requested on the left, that, that opening would remain and actually could get up to 60 feet wide. But the little opening next to the monument sign is the one, we would, we would like that closed off. And so the landscape would extend all the way to the corner. And the, as you'll, I'll talk further about that. I just wanted to point that out while we're looking at this. So next slide. Oh, Your Honor. No, went too far. Go back. There you go. Thank you. Okay, so the aerial view here, one on top of the other, is I wanted to point out the Caltrans existing highway markings include a center-left turn lane for a safe left turn access via Vermont for north, northbound highway traffic. So that's how, I've actually talked to the fuel delivery truck guy. I've seen him there twice. I went up to talk to him one time. He said he comes northbound, gets into that left turn lane. He makes a left turn on Vermont. He turns into the gas station. He fills the tanks and then he heads out, keep going forward and exit out onto the highway. No problem for him. But anyway, with this wide open access that's there now, it just, people just tend to ignore the highway markings and just enter and leave the site in unpredictable ways. And it's like particularly terrifying if you're on foot because you might not understand, looking at this picture, there's not much traffic because there isn't any traffic. But, you know, at busy times, the highway is flowing. And in order to, for people from the side streets to get onto the highway, making a left turn, you know, to coincide with these gap in both directions, you've got people at every intersection in Moss Beach and all along the front of the gas station, waiting for that moment. And when it happens, they step on the gas and who knows where they're going. So that's the issue. The lower image gives you a closer shot of the corner where there's two parking spaces. And to me, it looks like that was done after the fact as well. They have no evidence of that. We don't, we haven't seen the original plan for the gas station. But the, the remaining existing planter is right under the monument sign. You can't even hardly see it because the vehicles are in the way. And it seems to me that if this were devoted to landscape, it's would, it's a place to put the extra permeable surfaces and it would improve the aesthetics of the gas station. Next slide. Next slide. Oh, Your Honor, thank you. Sorry. So fuel truck circulation entering on Vermont. You can see the truck in there. He's come in on Vermont and that's where he, that's where the tanks load. So he pauses there and does his business and then, and he pauses over there as well to, I don't know, update his notebook or something. And so this, so additional through access is available also around the back of the convenience store. There's a RV, there's a house, a permanent RV there that's not in any plans either. If that were in the way, if that were blocking it, that could be moved. The fire hydrant is right there at the corner, fully accessible. The wide paved highway shoulder could accommodate large trucks double parked. I mean, it's this huge area, so emergency access, it's all covered. Through circulation will be retained at this corner site by Vermont on the north side. No vehicle turnaround is or will be required on-site with what MCC is suggesting. Next slide. So I colored this. The red is the applicant's proposed replacement. And the green is the suggestion from me to restore the rest of that permeable surface by extending the planter to the corner at Vermont and then paving in those two parking spaces, as I just talked about. And there's no, as I said, there's no need for additional direct highway access right next to the monument sign. It's so close to Vermont. I mean, why not just use Vermont? It just, if the opening wasn't there, people would see, oh, here's how I'm supposed to go. Restoring the previous width of the southern direct highway access opening does not significantly alter functional site access and circulation. It simply channelizes existing movements for safer conditions for all users. Providing a turning template, as requested by Caltrans, would show the path of travel for large vehicles such as fuel tankers. I just realized that you guys weren't looking at the same thing I was looking at. So I don't know how long you looked at that slide with the red and the green, but.
I saw it and.
Okay, well, I can go ahead. I can talk about the next slide. You don't really need to look at it. It's about the, the planter itself and the viability of the plants that might grow there. It's, it's only four feet wide, six inches high. The soil volume is three feet wide and less than a foot deep. No matter how drought tolerant, plant viability will be poor in this extremely located, limited soil volume. So my suggestion is to amend condition number four. I have that. It, it just, it doesn't need to say indigenous plants, non-invasive species will do. It's written there. Oh, we're on the next slide. Janet, Janet, we're on the next slide. There you go. That's what I'm talking about. So that's the suggestion for the revised condition of approval. And then also the planter specs. This is the same thing I brought up with the RV park at Harbor Village to delete the base rock and geotextile fabric from the planter bed and amended planting island construction details to demonstrate the topsoil direct connection. Then there would be some hope of these plants thriving. And the last slide is basically, this is the, the ask. This is my ask. It's supporting the Midcoast Community Council, reduce the highway access opening from the existing 144 feet to 60 feet wide by extending the buffer north to the property corner of Vermont. Restore the full 819 square feet, whatever it is, of landscape area, no net increase of impervious surface. Caltrans, and this, this final one with the sidewalk, okay, I'll admit this came later. When we learned more about transportation, complete streets and all this, we thought, here we are. Add a sidewalk to the front. You've seen there's already a sidewalk on, on Vermont. Bring that around along the front. And then in that remaining wide access opening, stripe of pedestrian across there. That's the extent of what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ketchum. With permission of the Chair, I'd like to briefly respond to the presentation.
Steve?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, please go ahead and let me ask one question of Lisa before you do that. So, Lisa, you're saying, your question really is, what is, we're trying to fix? What's the start period as opposed to something that we know today as opposed to something that we really should have been fixing is the larger scope?
This is, this is, CDP is to mitigate for a violation. And so what was there, the violation was to remove what was there. And so that's what we're comparing it to.
Way back, not just when people noticed.
This is, this is just a long-delayed, unpermitted situation that the planter that was there, the traffic situation, that's the starting point.
Okay.
Agreed. And that's what I was going to suggest is that we kind of break this up into two parts. The way I understand Commissioners Ketchum's comments and questions is, first of all, if the purpose of this project is to resolve the violation associated with removal of the planter, why are we not putting back the planter in the same size that was there previously? And I think that's an important question and one that I don't have an answer to that I am going to ask the applicant to respond to. The second part of the request is, well, why don't we require the installation of a sidewalk as well? And I think that while the staff shares the interest in requiring and establishing better pedestrian access along this stretch of Highway one, we have limited ability to require this property owner construct it within the Highway one right-of-way. So from the staff's perspective, in response to what you heard from Commissioner Ketchum, we agree that we should restore, address the violation associated with removal of the planter. However, we feel limited in our ability to require this property owner to do more than restore the planter because much of that work is not even on his property. It's within the Highway one right-of-way and needs to be done in accordance with the larger plan. It really isn't within his ability to control or implement. So I'll leave it at that and be available for questions.
Go ahead, Lisa.
I, I think. So the applicant came to the Midcoast Community Council, one of the times we had this on our agenda. And he said that it was the previous planter, that people were driving over it. And maybe that was because they couldn't see it was there because there weren't any plants in it. But they, they didn't want it to, they wanted to contain the replacement to the length of the canopy and not just where the cars are parked at the pumps. They didn't want it to expand there. And it's, I suppose it's, anyway, that's, that was the position then. And I guess I, okay, and then as far as the sidewalk, what Steve was just saying that, I agree that was an add-on to the sidewalk. And it came up, you know, because we had the mixed-use building just one block from here, which we heard a couple of meetings ago. And we, we got the applicant to add a sidewalk there. And, you know, okay, so for people in the neighborhood behind this area to get to that new commercial building, they can, can walk through the weeds in that block. But in this block with this wide open no man's land, it's really intimidating. So it would help to have the planter filling that area. Then the people, at least they have some kind of a barrier there to walk next to. And, but, but even maybe just the cross hawk painting across this large opening, anything that would help with safety. But fine, if you don't want to do the sidewalk. But I really would like the planter to go all the way to the corner.
Any more questions?
I have an observation. Based on the, on the project, here says that in front of us is the consideration to, to install and restore a low-profile landscape. That's basically what is in front of us, right? So install and restore. And my question is, the planter, the original planter was very low and high. And so vehicle, vehicle just drive over it. The new planter, maybe I, I was away a little for a minute or so because I needed to do some business and then come back. And is this the same height or is it going to be higher than the normal planter?
It's this, may I? It's the same height. And the first image I had shown, you know, of the actual Google Street View of that planter, it's, if you had some three-foot tall plants in there, you'd see it. You wouldn't be as likely to drive over it. And even to drive, it's just like a curb you have along the sidewalk. That's all it is. And then the dirt's in there. And, and I understand the applicant doesn't want it 13 feet wide out into the rider. That's fine. So use up that area by making it longer or narrower. That's fine. And it will help the, the safety and circulation to do that. As long as we get the same square footage of what was removed, restored.
So, but that doesn't answer my question, Commissioner Ketchum. And I don't know, maybe not for you, the question, but for the presenter. I think it was Louie, Lisa. The high of the new planter, is that going to be taller than the original planter to avoid this kind of over, driving over it?
No, it's the same height. Uh. Caltrans doesn't want the planter taller. It's safety issue.
Okay, but then if, if the owner's saying that the planter as it was, it was, it was dangerous because vehicles drive over it. I don't understand why is it that we need to force this person to do it again, the same height? When then it is demonstrated that then there's causing some kind of problem, you know? I mean, in that regard, I cannot support what you're saying, Lisa. Because if we, if we're going back to do the same height, we're facing the same problem. But we're not, I mean, we're not solving the situation.
I think the problem partly was because before there were two openings on the highway on either side of this planter. And the one next to the monument sign, if a large truck tried to make that turn, it's too short and they probably rode up on the curb. On, on the southern side with this much wider opening, I don't see that as a problem. So if we're proposing to close off the smaller opening next to the monument sign, then people won't be tempted to try to make that turn. They won't drive over the planter.
Lisa, just quickly, how, do you know, like, how tall were the plants in that, in the existing planter when it was there? Was it, was it just pretty short or did they even keep out the plants?
The, no, the, the plants were all pretty much gone, dead and gone. There was a couple of little remaining tufts of plant material, but it was mostly just dirt. Ninety percent just dirt.
So, so it was for someone sitting on a car, like pumping gas, if it wasn't paying attention, that they would probably not see and go right through that, the planter. Because there was nothing visual to let them know that someone, something was there. If they were not paying attention, I would get it.
I understand this is all anecdotal from the applicant. And he said that sometimes if the, people complained their vehicles were damaged and other times the planter was damaged. He just really didn't want the planter, obviously. But the planter, as you look at it in the picture I showed, doesn't look damaged. It doesn't, I mean, if you drove over a curb, it wouldn't, I don't know.
Okay. Any more questions of Lisa before we go back to ask staff?
Well, I, I do.
Okay, ask your question of Lisa.
Okay. So right now, I, I think the picture I'm looking at, this is on my own screen. So there's nothing there. Is that right? Other than those two cars, parking space near, near the Chevron sign, the big tall sign. near the Chevron sign, the big tall sign, all that just kind of slopes and merges with the Highway 1? Is that correct, Lisa?
Right, right. Just, it's like a, it's like a industrial truck stop.
Okay. So in the middle of all that, there's a proposal to put this planter, which is what, 36 feet long or something?
So it's supposed to replace the older one, but it's like one-sixth of the area. And it's much shorter, much narrower.
Right. So it is only as long as the island part where the cars come to get gasoline, right?
It's the same length as the canopy over there pumps.
Oh, same length as the canopy. Okay. So just by putting that, is the entrance to the gas station blocked near those two cars, two-car parking?
Are you talking about the two parking spaces right on the corner between the monument sign and the corner? That's like just a little island. It's almost like the cars are for sale. It's so odd to park there. So that doesn't block anything. It's just, to me, it should be landscaping, but now it's parking.
Okay. And is that parking, like, can they enter from the highway side and park there?
No, you enter the parking spaces from the gas station. There's a curb around the outside edge. Part of it is the sidewalk on Vermont. And then it's just a curb.
Okay. So if there are no cars there, would it be all open? If there are no cars parked there in those two spots?
In the, in the two spots on the corner, then you would just have pavement there if the cars weren't parked there. But it looks to me like by the placement of the monument sign and all that, in fact, it's on the corner, that that was originally all part of the landscaping, that those two parking spaces were landscaping. That's my theory.
Okay. Let me tell you what I'm trying to get at is true that right now, those two spots are used as car parking, but if they are not there, even if we put this planter, the proposed planter here, can the trucks still turn in there? Is there still enough room?
Well, if we had the slide presentation up or the other shot I had, it showed that the one, the picture I showed you of the truck and a car parked in that two spaces you're talking about. And it also, it shows going down Vermont and you can see the exits, the entrances to the gas station on Vermont. Remember the picture where the fuel truck had pulled into the gas station? And basically, that entrance on the side street in Vermont is, is right where you would enter those parking spaces. So that the entrance, you just enter the station and okay, you've got the slide up, so go back. Can go back a few slides. That works. And also this one, the bottom picture. So you're looking at the two vehicles parked there. You can see the curb around the corner. And by the way, if you're coming, if you're entering the highway from the side street, you pull forward because this curb that you're seeing, that's the property line. And there's a wide highway shoulder there. But anyway, I digress. So the sidewalk along the side street, you can see the entrance to the gas station and there's actually, there's another one a little further along. And if you needed that to be wider, it'd be easier to just taper that curve over. But yeah, it's wide open access there on Vermont on the side street. None of that would change. And it's not affected by the circulation, never has been, that little corner area.
Okay, okay. So, so by putting this planter, we restrict the entrance from the highway into the gas station to only one opening. Is that correct?
No, you mean, what, one opening, Highway 1? From Highway 1, you would restrict it to one, one opening if I, if I read this correct.
If you go two more slides, you're showing us, I go two more slides. There, no, back, sorry. Back there. Okay. Yeah. So now you've seen the picture. You can understand this better. So the red line is what's proposed by the applicant. And the green line is asking to extend that and close off that one opening and include the corner parking spaces. And that would be the area of the new planter. And the, on the other side of the red line, where the, there's still a wide open area to go directly on, onto the highway from the gas station. So basically, you can enter from, you've got enter from Vermont or exit on Vermont and same thing. You just go right through the gas station. You've still got the wide open, 60 feet wide open. That's huge. It's like a big street still there. None of that changes. The circulation within the gas station doesn't change.
Okay. Okay, I understand that. But one last question. So the red on this slide here, the red part is where the planter we are, is being proposed by this, by the project. And green part is the one you would like to add? Or is that also part of this proposal?
No, that's my opinion.
Okay, okay. Understood.
And also the Midcoast Community Council.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for, for being patient. No more questions.
Thank you. Any more questions of staff, Lisa?
No.
All right. Manuel, you have some questions?
I have a question. Have, have we asked the applicant at any point to restore what was taken down? What was there originally? At any point have we asked them? Because I know they're, they're asking for just a small section to restore something small. But have we ever asked them and do we have a response from them?
Well.
Hi, this is Steve. From the staff's perspective, I mean, yes, the whole reason this item is before you today is because the removal of the previously existing landscape barrier was done without a permit. So we issued a violation notice and it became the property owner's responsibility to make a proposal to the commission to how they intend to rectify the violation. They have proposed a smaller barrier, a smaller landscape planter. And I asked the planner who's on the line, Olivia Boo, this morning because I hadn't realized what they proposed was substantially smaller than what was there previously. If we had had the conversation with the applicant about expanding the size of the proposed planter to better match what was there previously. And the answer I got was that conversation has not yet occurred. And what I would suggest to the commission is as soon as we are ready to have the applicant come up, we have the applicant respond to this question of, is what has been proposed by the MCC acceptable? And if not, why? So that would be the next step that I would recommend unless there's other questions you'd like us to address.
Thank you, Steve. More questions?
Okay, I have an observation. I have an observation, Commissioner Hanson. If we have not heard from, from the, from the applicant and I heard observation from Commissioner Ketchum to be very logical, can we just move on with the motion to kind of like continuance this project until we hear from the applicant? So the applicant can hear our observation?
We're too far, we're too early in the discussion to get here.
The applicant is on the line.
Yeah.
We'll get there.
Okay, okay.
So do you have any more questions of staff, Mario?
No, I don't have a question.
Kum Kum, you have any questions of staff?
No, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, now we would like to talk with the applicant and does the applicant have a presentation they wish to make?
No, sir. By the way, good afternoon. I'm Greg Ward. And no, I don't have a presentation. I've been working with, with Olivia and I got to give you a little background. I was brought in on this late. And I've admitted, because I do work for Mr. Nurhan. And both in terms of design and in terms of general contracting. And basically, to start out with, Mr. Nurhan didn't know that there was a permit required to remove that planter to begin with. Okay, I got to tell you that much. Also, his main concerns are is, is safety like everybody else, but also to be able to get those fuel trucks in and out without them having to do a whole lot of negotiating, maneuvering, you know, back and forth, you know, back and forth to get their fuel trucks in there to do it. Because sometimes they come in at night, sometimes they come in during the day. And it needs to be as open as possible for those trucks to be able to deliver their product. I'm basically in the middle of this right now, trying to help resolve the issue and I had to throw in sort of a monkey wrench into this. Excuse me. But my latest conversation with Mr. Nurhan is that there's also an issue here that you guys haven't brought up and that's the fire department. The fire department has some disagreement going on with Caltrans over this issue. And that's why it was kind of a surprise that this thing came up as early as it was, as it did.